Yeah, basically just, I didn't know this, but it has to be done yearly. To reflect the change in the chairperson.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Set public hearing for zoning requests.
Okay, let me get these stacked here. February 12th. At nine twenty. And then. Nine thirty. And nine forty.
And these are all the zoning requests then?
Uh, two are zoning requests and one is a public hearing for the preliminary plat.
Okay, so the nine forty is the preliminary plat?
Correct.
Alright.
And do there enough spacing and time for Chad, do you think he had these?
The first two are pretty quick and straightforward. But there shouldn't be any issues, uh, and then the. The preliminary plat, Chris and I talked about via email a little bit, so. There's a lot of interest and. Desire to have some input with Brad Nepper. Um, plat out to the river ridge and that area being affiliated with it for several years, I know that. They feel obligated to have some opportunity and so with all the calls and discussions and concerns of traffic. It isn't necessarily. Um. A requirement to run a preliminary plat in a public hearing setting. But my thought is with them wanting to expedite and being able to start by April. Let's get all the questions and input during the preliminary plat. And then I would be able to recommend you guys to waive the second and third reading on the final plat. So. That's, that's definitely my thought process to that.
Okay. I'll go ahead and make a motion to set those hearings, uh, February 12th at nine twenty, nine thirty and nine forty.
Second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye. And then I was just gonna share, I'm not sure how much conversation you have in and out with Brian and Kyle here, but. One of the things with the traffic. Um, he had sent me an email, it said. A future consideration for zoning may include requiring right turn and left turns on roads. If they generate one hundred turns per day. That can be very costly. Some assume, I'm not sure who some are. Assume a residence generates ten vehicles per day. This is just food for thought, so if there's twenty-four units. Times ten, that's two hundred and forty. And, you know, the terms out there, you come towards Randy Williams and you turn into the west. And you put a turning lane there, I mean, I don't think it's. Very, uh. Safe either, you know, and then you don't have to whip and you got a floodplain and all that kind of stuff, but. This is just, I don't know if he shared any of these thoughts with. The residents that have been calling me, so I just wanted to make sure if you have any. Uh, calls, if you're aware of traffic. Um, and again, I. With these being two-bedroom, you know, condo-type. Uh, residents for golf course members or, you know, I, I think that, uh. The chance of two hundred and forty turns being in and out of that new driveway will probably be. Over exaggerated, you know, the, the. The traffic really there comes to Okobogi, you know, Denali's, you know, where the traffic.
In his plans, are these gonna be like zero entry?
So I think there's a combination of they're still looking at the final design, um. You know, they would like to get some basements, but what they, what they want to do is the basement would really be at the ground level now. Cause they're gonna build this up, uh, to be more of a level of the, the road, you know, there's probably five or six-foot drop in some of that area from the. Golf Course Boulevard to the north, and if they don't do that, they're gonna have some problems with the moisture.
I know my nephew happens to be on the corner there for railers.
Oh, yeah.
He's, he's our. These got some serious water concerns there.
And, uh, one thing that they're doing is, uh. They're designing a, a really large detention line. So that would be someone to the halls and subdivision that are. Where all that runoff goes there, and then once it gets to a certain height, if it does, then it discharges towards current ditch, but. Um, I would just rather have them have that time. Um, there were several that have attended all of our rezoning and then the preliminary plat meeting, be able to have their time to talk. To you in a, in a setting, and maybe they, maybe they'll show up, maybe they, um, got their answers at the pass meeting. One thing with using the engineer is they're always gonna do it right, I mean, Brad's spending the money.
Biggest thing I've heard about that area is out there is a speed limit.
Yeah, and I told him that, that that could be potentially, uh, you know, reviewed and researched and then that could always. Um, change, but I, I, I would be in favor of that, cause even in the mornings when I used to go out there too early. And there's walkers, Rick Johnson's wife's always on that curve between about six-thirty and seven. And, you know, uh, dropping that speed limit down about at Stacy Henderson's location. Down to thirty-five the rest of the way, I think would be why, that's just my. Recommendation, I think.
And I think the clientele that maybe we're looking at moving out there, maybe wouldn't have children and school can do a lot of school bus stops and stuff like that.
Speak that well.
Think that's it for us.
Okay, well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it, thank you.
Again, thanks on.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Either it's you or somebody in the future, I think that's just the way to. Then everybody knows whose responsibility it is and move forward and get done.
You know, when everybody meets at the same time, that's like pulling teeth, I'll go off the site, you know, and meet them. Everybody's gotta make separate trips.
Yep, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is discussed because for no parking signs at one hundred and tenth street and Olympic avenue. Um, that is in Stanley, apparently there is. A fire hydrant there. Um, the person we got the request from is not on the city council and he's not. A mayor, so I'm wondering if maybe we need to reach out to the, to the city of Stanley to see if they want that?
I would say at least the fire chief.
Is this in Stanley or is it?
No, it's out of the country.
It's out of the country, so it would not be the city.
It's where they tapped into the rural water with hydrants. To get, uh, in case of emergency calls, the fire truck's got a place to get water. And their concern is, is that if something does happen. Somebody will be parked in that driveway or with the equipment or something in there and they couldn't get the truck up to the hydrant.
Haven't you, you and Brian had this discussion with him once and told him no? And now we're getting another request.
Well, if we're, we told him he's allowed to buy the signs and, and everything and put the signs up, but he, what, what needs to be done. I believe is they're looking at doing an ordinance so that if somebody violates, does park there, they can be rolled a check. Which is gonna take an ordinance to do that.
So if it's in the county, is the county required to do that, responsible for doing that?
Yes. So I would highly suggest that maybe we put this on hold and that Ryan come up with the, if he's got a template ordinance on something like this. And to work with the. People that are actually in a position to make a decision on it, like the fire chief. Or. The council of Stanley or something, whoever over the fire department. Make that official request to us and not just come from an individual. Member of the organization.
I don't know, but he might be, Roger might be the fire chief, I'm not sure.
I'm not for sure either.
Alright, do I have a motion to table this?
Yes, you do.
Second.
Alright, first second, all in favor?
Aye.
Meet with Paul Berlin, Northeast Iowa RCND.
I haven't heard anything from the view, John?
Nope.
Last I heard was the email, or he had left a message and I emailed him in the beginning of last week to see if he still wanted to meet today. And he said yes.
See if he's in the parking lot or on the way, right? Paul, are you en route or is almost the Ford House, we're up on you on the agenda item on this board supervisor meeting?
So you're probably what? You're probably fifteen minutes out.
It's not gonna work.
John's, you know, John's got a, an appointment he's gotta get off to and stuff and then I. He's. Paul is right now. Again, probably, as chairman, can we go to the next item?
We have to wait for the, the next item is closed session. So we're just waiting on the attorneys.
You're over three-fourths of your way here already. Make that, you can make that.
Go ahead, Paul.
Uh, I could certainly join by teams here, uh, if that works, if you guys on schedule.
Can you join by teams, Chris? Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Joined in by teams.
Alright.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah.
We'll be on there, they're option, they're not. Getting back on speaker.
Oh, somebody's waiting in the lobby, here he is.
Should be on now, I just. Are you there, Paul?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Alright, you're next up on the agenda.
Great, uh, again, apologize, uh, for my tardiness this morning. Uh. First of all, I wanted to, to start off and say. Uh, thank you for the contribution to Northeast Iowa RCND. Uh, a year ago, uh, I feel we've, we've put your money to good use. Uh, the RCND has been able to turn every dollar that we've received from our county supervisors, supporters. Into almost twenty dollars that is run directly through our office, so almost a twenty-to-one return. Uh, on that money and direct economic impact in our region. That's not counting any sort of indirect, um, benefits such as tourism. Generation or anything along those lines, that's strictly dollars directly through our office. Uh, and so we're, we're pretty proud of that. Uh. We, we feel that if you count an indirect, we're probably closer to fifty, fifty-to-one. Uh, on return on investment for you, so we really appreciate, uh, your support. Dollars that we get from county supervisors allow us to do. Uh, things that, you know, pay for things that grants, contracts and those sorts of things, uh, don't really pay for, such as our. Directors and officers insurance, uh, our property taxes, those sorts of, of things, uh, property insurances, um, and down the line. Uh, so we really appreciate the, the support that we get that allows us to, to focus on the work we're actually doing in the area. Uh, in, in the last year, uh, some of the, some of the highlights of, of what we were able to work on. Uh, we finally wrapped up the, uh, Upper Wopsee Flood Reduction Project, uh, which was. Uh, a large effort to try and put through the Iowa Watersheds approach, some flood reduction practices on the ground. And through that project, uh, the final tallies, we were able to put twenty-eight projects. Um, in Buchanan and a couple in Delaware County, uh, but mostly in Buchanan County. Uh, totaling about two-point-nine million dollars in total expenditures, and that money came from the, the. Um, US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Uh, and so, so that was exciting, uh, hopefully there'll be some, some downstream and long-term benefits and flood reduction from that. Uh, we also, uh, worked with, uh, continue to work with a, a number of local foods initiatives. So we work with the, uh, Independence Farmers Market, allowing them. Uh, to access some funding for marketing as well as help to provide some support for coordinator. Uh, through that project, we've also worked, uh. Through a, a separate, uh, project to bring a mobile cider press or a mobile juicing unit to Northeast Iowa. It's one of only two in the nation, uh, the other one is in Colorado. And with that project. We, uh, pressed seventy-five thousand pounds of apples last year, uh, from seventeen different orchards. Uh, and served both Convergence Cider Works as well as Pivo Brewery last year utilized that as well as a number of individual. Uh, cider producers as well, so that unit is, is kind of a state-of-the-art. Uh, piece of equipment, it's mounted on a trailer and so it, it can go anywhere. Uh, we've, uh, had requests from all over the state and actually into Minnesota and Wisconsin to bring that unit there. Uh, and so we're trying to figure out what, uh. Part of the grant process was trying to figure out how much it would cost to take that unit out of our area. Anybody within our region, uh, is able to use that unit here this year for free, for no charge, uh. Through that project, so it, it's an exciting, um. It's an exciting, uh, piece of equipment, it's gotten a lot of use. Uh, all of the fruit. That runs through that machine is, is otherwise not marketable. So we're using sort of the seconds, the apples that are, are not pretty enough to be sold. Uh, directly for, uh, consumption, and so it's, it's a real value-added, uh, product. Uh, so that's, that's really exciting, uh.
Paul, good.
Yeah.
Clayton, I have a question on that, uh, now, if it goes out of the membership region area, is there a usage charge?
Correct, correct. We've not yet, we've not yet taken it out of the area, but we've had several requests this year to, or for the next, uh, season to do so. And so right now we're in the process of calculating what that, um. What that fee needs to be in order to make sure that, uh, we're covering all expenses and, and helping to pay for some of those. Uh, longer term, you know, helping to make a, a, a sort of a pot to cover long-term maintenance. Uh, long-term insurance and those sorts of things. Um, so yes, there, i- if we take it outside the area for users, there will, there will be a fee that they'll have to pay. Uh, for the operation, uh, currently there are two certified users, one that, that works in our office and then. Also, uh, Natalie, the owner of the, the cider works in Decora is also certified to utilize that machine. Um. And, and so one of those individuals has to go with it as well. Um, when it, when it goes out, so we'll have to factor in the costs for, for time as well, so yes. Uh, but currently, as I said, anybody in our, in our, uh. Seven county area can utilize it, uh, this year for, for no charge to them.
That's good.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. The, the, the next, uh, um. Thing that we, we worked on with, uh. A process of creating a new bicycle map, uh, that, uh, includes Buchanan County. Uh, we've gotten a lot of requests for that and we've already had to go to reprint. Um, because they flew off the shelves last summer, uh, I think at the state fair. They were one of the most requested items and so that's been, uh, that's been a, a good project so far. Uh, and we'll, we'll continue to, to restock those as well. We also continue to work on, um, a- as you're aware, helping to. Uh, develop new projects for the Upper Wopsee Pinnican watershed. We worked in the last year on updating the safety and water trail signage, uh, throughout Buchanan County with, uh, um. The Iowa DNR as well as with, uh, Conservation Board, uh, working to update, uh, safety signage for river users. Uh, and so that's something that, uh, was needed, that water trail was implemented, uh, quite some time ago and so there were a lot of signs missing and a lot of new signs. Um, to, to help improve safety and access there as well. Uh, so we, we continue to work on, uh, a number of small business development projects as well. And it, it's, uh, it never ceases to amaze, uh, what. Uh, projects come up that, that we find ourselves, uh, being asked to help with, and I've got a tremendous staff. Uh, at my disposal that, uh, that is able to tackle pretty much every, every request. Uh, we can get, certainly within reason, but, so I would encourage if there are other projects that you guys know of or other ways that. That we could be of assistance, to certainly, uh, feel free to reach out. We're always, uh, excited to, to work on new, uh, new projects and we're always. Um, excited to tackle new challenges as well. Are, are there, are there other questions that I might be able to answer?
Uh, Paul, I was wondering, you know, the goal was to get everybody in all the counties at the same level of contributions. Your organization agency.
Yep.
Has that been reached?
We are at, uh, s- well, last year we were at six out of the seven. That were there, uh. Chick, Chickasaw County was the only one that, that did not. Uh, go to our full request. Last year.
Do you feel that's gonna happen?
Uh, I, I don't, I don't know, I don't know, Clayton, um. They're our newest county. Uh. They're, uh, I, I would say we do. We do the least amount of work in that county, um, I think because of, of that, the, the newness of them. Uh, they're still trying to get people in that county used to having us as a resource. Um. So I, I guess I, I don't, I don't know. What, what's gonna happen there in terms of, of them. Um, getting up to that full level.
Thanks.
Yep.
Do you have any questions, John?
No, I, I appreciate you doing everything you're able to do. Does for us with the watershed. And hopefully we look up some new grant projects.
Yeah, that's certainly the, certainly the push and certainly the goal and. Uh, I, ideally, ideally, uh. Would be able to find a, a more permanent source of, of funding to guide those, those efforts as well.
I know Ross and Tori had sent me a sample of, uh, a different funding mechanism, uh, for the memberships. Uh, based more on population. And we're kinda talking, discussing that to see what we're gonna do in the future.
Yeah, it's a, it's a model that others, other WMAs have used around the state, um. And, and certainly would allow for a little bit more. Uh. Time investment from, from Ross and Tori through that effort, but, um. Interesting to see how, how, uh, member entities think, think of that.
Paul, could you give me the name of the, the seven counties that's in the region?
Yeah, uh, it's Allen McKee. Winisheek, Howard. And Clayton, Fayette, Buchanan and Chickasaw.
I have no further questions and, uh. Thank you and your staff for all that you do for the counties, appreciate it.
Yeah, and I, and I. Some good funded projects with the, the rest of your ARP funding. Some good funded projects with the, the rest of your ARP funding and then other things that you guys are, are working towards, so. And John, I appreciate you uh coming to our RCND meetings and hopefully passing on. Uh, what we're working on and again, uh apologies for, for not making it there in person this morning.
Not a problem. At least you're able to jump on this way.
Look forward to seeing you at the next meeting.
Sounds good. Sounds good.
Thanks, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Need a motion to adjourn and go into closed session?
Can adjourn, you can make a motion to go into closed session and then you have to make a motion to come out of closed session and then you can make your motion to adjourn if not done.
I will make a motion to go into closed session.